Alright folks, I'd like to call the June meeting for the Town Board of Lodi to order. First up is a pledge allegiance and a moment of silence. And as always, give me one moment to remember how to share my screen. I always do this wrong. Oh man. Alright folks, if you'll say it with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. Thanks folks. We'll do better on the mutes and the moments of silence going forward. Connie, if you could, can we get a roll call please?
Supervisor Barnhart.
Here.
Deputy Supervisor Latini.
Here.
Councilman Sibley.
Here.
Councilman Batman.
Here.
Councilman Thomas.
Here.
And Attorney... Frank Fisher.
Frank, I saw you here. Are you around?
He was there.
He's on the call, but he's muted at the moment.
Wrong Frank.
There he is. Hey Frank. Oh, wrong Frank.
Not the Attorney Frank.
Well hey Frank, how are you?
Good, good Kyle.
Alright, we don't have an attorney present at the moment, but I don't think that's gonna stop us from doing anything tonight.
No, we're unstoppable.
That's right. Alright, before we go too far, I just want to make sure all the Town Board members, you feeling good about your audio? Everybody can hear alright?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, great. At this time, we will entertain any additions to the agenda for this evening. Does anybody from the public have anything they'd like to add to the agenda? Or carve out any time that they'd like to speak tonight? Alright, hearing none, moving on. With that, I'll make a motion to accept tonight's agenda. Has everybody had the Town Board members been able to see the agenda?
Yeah.
Great.
May I interrupt for a minute?
Who are you? Yes.
Cindy Hoffman.
Hi Cindy, how are you?
I was on mute and I was just talking away. I would like to address the board if I could at some time. It won't take very long. I just have a request.
You got it. So generally, towards the end of the meeting, we'll open up public comments so that we can talk about the things that, you know, the resolutions that we passed and the things that we did. But since you'd like to speak right after we approve the bills and just before the highway report, I'll give you that opportunity, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to approve tonight's agenda. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you Trevor. All in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carried, agenda accepted. Does anybody need more time to review the minutes from May?
No.
Alright, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from May. Is there a second?
Second.
There it is, Seth Thomas with a second. All in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carried. The bills. I sent all the board members the vouchers for the highway and for the general fund. Are there any bills that anybody would like to dig into a little bit deeper? Seth Thomas did reach out to me earlier this week with a question about one of the bills, and I'm wondering, Connie, maybe you can answer this?
Sure.
It's the cemetery bill. The very last bill in the general fund. There are two $50 vandalism fees. And I was just wondering if, I'm just not familiar with them. I was wondering if anybody knew about these and how to explain them.
The vandalism fee goes, it's not really our money at all. We're kind of just a transition of it. It's money that the super Terry, yeah, the superintendent of cemeteries collects and receives. Then it's vouched back into his account. The vandalism fees for, what is it for Rick?
Things get broke down there, headstones and stuff.
If somebody breaks the headstone, it's kind of a bit of coverage for vandalism. Does that clarify it or not really?
How does it work? The folks that are getting buried pay the vandalism fee to us and then we pay it to the cemetery?
Correct, pretty much yes. And sums it up. The individual person, plot owner, pays the $50 to the cemetery. We do the voucher and process. The money's transferred from a check into an account via voucher process.
Okay. Seth, you comfortable with that answer?
Yep.
Cool. Hearing no other questions about the bills, I will entertain a motion to pay the bills. Is there a first?
Make a motion.
I heard Seth and Paul with a first and a second. All in favor to pay the bills, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carried. I know that we voted before, I'm gonna add one little piece of discussion. There was a very large municipal disaster consultants bill in there. I had anticipated last month, which we had a pretty large bill of 14,000, that that would be our last big bill. But FEMA has been difficult. They've been challenging us on some of the costs and repairs, particularly with the Cat's Elbow Bridge. So municipal disaster consultants have been hard at work this month trying to get that up to speed. So I think that's why we saw the other big bill. At this point, we're gonna phase into the highway report, but I believe Cindy wanted to ask us or say something. Cindy?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the time and offering for me to get this over with. I'm a little bit nervous as always, but I'd like to ask the board to get together and consider selling the property on the east side of 8403 Old Lake Road. We did this about a year and a half ago and I would really like for them to entertain that again. And if they have plans for a portion of the land, if they could see selling the portion that they're not going to be using, so we have a driveway access. The ideal situation, of course, would be for us to purchase the entire thing, but if it's beneficial to the board, to the town to keep some of it for whatever reason, if they would consider at least a driveway and possibly a turnaround area for us, we would be putting a garage on the existing property we own. I just wanted to see if we would address that again. And I realize I've done a little research and I understand that it would have to go up for a public bid. I've learned a little bit about it, but at least I wanna see if we can get the ball rolling again by chance.
Thanks Cindy. No reason to be nervous. It's just a bunch of people from Lodi. We're nothing fancy. I'm happy to take a look at that again. I do remember I was in the audience last time when you and I think your mother came to the meeting and presented this, and I know the board deliberated it. But that was a different board and that was, I think, 2018 or 2019, so I'm happy to take a look at it and and yeah, I'm not quite sure what the process is. I've never gone through it, but maybe I could reach out to you and we could set up a time that I could come down and walk around. Maybe we'll bring another board member or two down and take a look at it and get a better idea.
Certainly. And I have all the maps that were done and I have all the all the items that I found during the time I found out that it was indeed the towns rather than the states. So I would have all that handy for you all as well.
Great. So I'd like, if it's alright with you, I'll reach out to you via email and we can get the ball rolling from there if that's alright.
Terrific. Thank you for your time and I'll let you go on with your meeting.
Oh, well thanks for showing up Cindy, we appreciate it. Alright, moving on to the highway report. Rick, you there with the highway report?
I'm here.
That's all we ask, really.
Finished grading dirt roads up, got the rest of dust oil down, cleaned some ditches, replaced the air tanks on the O6, did some coal patching, did some mowing. Had to replace the motor mount on the grader they broke.
Who's "they"?
One on each side, Herbie and Mike. They wanted something like $2,600 to fix it. We fixed it for about $500. They come out here. They were gonna. Helped the county last week on West Seneca Street with the excavator. The grader's gonna blow the head gasket. County's gonna take it up for us Monday, I think, if everything works out right. It's the worst scenario. He said it'd be around $6,500 to fix it.
Rick, what caused it to blow?
What did what?
What caused it to fail? Bad radiator?
They saying it's a trade and a D7 motor.
Got it. Okay.
So he said, "They do it in our shop," and there's only like about $500 difference, but he says then if you need something, you're paying me $500 every time I gotta run to Syracuse to get something, you know, so.
Good point.
Might as well just take it up there where they got the lifts and then nobody in my shop's gonna get hurt helping them or anything, you know?
Yep.
And got a meeting next Thursday, the 18th with Susan and the engineer. Go around, look at some sites. If everything goes right, they should have another 261,958 and some change coming back again, because they got the paperwork for that. So that should, that's a total right around the half of a million dollars from them so far.
Please.
Yeah.
That's about it, I guess, for this month.
Sounds like a lot, Rick. Thank you very much. Anybody have any other questions for Rick?
Yes. Rick, just wanted to know traversing Shaw Road in particular. Maybe there's some areas of the Lower Lake Road. I know that the team has put in some coal patch. Just wondering if there's any other priority for the, mostly what they are is slots going across the road on the Lower Lake Road and it's sunken. And there's also like a hump, well, maybe 100 yards before you get to Shaw from the flood. And then, of course, Shaw itself is pretty beat up. Where on the planning schedule is the team with attacking those improvements?
Well, the stuff that was done from the floods on Shaw Road, I wasn't gonna touch that until after they decided if they were gonna replace that pipe or not.
Okay.
And the one down by Vinotrin, we were gonna go scrape that down a little bit and take the speed bump out.
Got it. Okay.
And the mile of road that, we figured most work should be done should be that second mile of Upper Lake Road that's all broke up, that everybody cuts across due to 414 from New Bridge.
Second mile. Okay, so yeah, yeah, so got it. From Upper Lake Road to 414?
No, from the cemetery to Shaw Road, the first year.
Okay. No, no, I guess I shouldn't say that. I guess it's Shaw Road itself. That seems to be in tougher shape. So.
Road was as bad as that first mile of
Okay.
Of Upper Lake Road. Both sides of that are gone.
Okay.
When I got the money back, some of the money back from FEMA, we was gonna, if we decided to do anything with Blackwell Creek, then we were gonna redo Shaw Road all the way down around.
Got it. Okay.
Down around. It's, you know, it's kinda hard to spend that kinda money just to fix that spot and then next, then say, "Oh yeah, we're gonna replace that pipe now."
Right. No, yeah, no, that makes sense.
We're gonna go down and smooth it out and maybe if we get the chip sealing, maybe I can talk them into going down there and just putting one coat across that area or something, you know?
And then, and then the other spot is like on Shaw Road, right before you get to Upper Lake Road, there's probably 100 yards there that's potholes on both sides. People have been driving in the grass on the side. And then if you go north of that, excuse me, east of that on Shaw, that section in there seems pretty rough. There's a corner, maybe 200 yards before you get to 414, that's in pretty rough shape too.
I thought we dug that up.
Is that taken care of? I haven't been by and maybe.
I think we dug a foot and a half, two foot out of there and put a new basin up there.
And that's on Shaw, right above Fries?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Well, thank you.
I think the only thing we had left to do is a little bit right there on the curve, but then the grader took a hike and he said we could use it, but I don't wanna be using it and have the head gasket finished going and have more damage to the grader.
Yeah, the lower end. Yeah, you let in the coolant.
So.
Okay.
And Colbert said that when they get done with their grader, we could use that, so.
Okay. So is the, is the Lower Lake Road and Shaw Road on the docket for 2020 for repair?
Not all of it, but some of it is.
Okay.
So I've sort of planted a seed. Oh, go ahead Rick, please.
And we gotta go over and we gotta tear up South Town, or not, South Town Building Road. I call it racetrack road. Lodi over town line, the second mile on that, that's ours. We gotta roll that over, so. That all broke up.
So I sort of planted a seed with Rick a week or two ago to come up with a five to 10-year road plan, which I think is important now that we're getting all this FEMA money and you know, some of the work's been done, some of the work needs to be done and we'll be bidding out some of the work, so. I'm not quite sure how these road plans go, but my intention is to ask Rick to sit down with one or two of us and come up with that plan for the next five or 10 years. Luke, maybe you wanna be a part of that when we can put it together?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Great.
The Upper Lake Road, they blacktopped from the corner partway up the other hill. And for as much traffic as that road gets, Seneca Stone was up and they were giving me a price on blacktopping, blacktopping them two miles and then I can break it down. I only gotta do a mile, because it seems though that with all the heavy traffic anymore, chip sealing ain't enough and coal paving lasts maybe four, three or four years, five years at the most, and then you get back up and I got the quote from them for the two miles today, it was right around, for them shimmin' it and doing the two miles, it was $200,000. So I thought maybe if I did a mile of that, the first mile, and use up my chips money that they say we should get 80% of, but the guy's not gonna do any of the paperwork until the governor signs everything and puts it on his desk, but they're saying we should get 80%, so.
And Rick, when they redid the bridge and you had them run that apron up a little longer, you know, I guess there was some funds there that was extra you kicked in. And they ran that asphalt apron up the side of the hill there, or actually on both sides of the bridge. Did they do anything to the sub base? Because that road seems very high quality there.
I don't know. I didn't see what, if they, they must've put a binder down and then then went over with like a number seven top or something, or seven.
And is the quote, the quote you got from Seneca Stone for the asphalt, is that the same method?
I don't, I think this is getting a little more, it's getting a heavier binder to shim it with. And then three inches of binder on top of the whole road, all the way across, and then next year, then it's just gonna put a layer of chip seal across it, he said, so.
Okay.
So I'm sure it'll be made a lot heavier than what that was down there coming off the bridge and stuff.
Yeah, because that looks really nice and it's held up, so.
And I got the fire company coming. I think this coming Tuesday, they're gonna wash all the, everything off that bridge and then I gotta go get some stuff. The guy that was in the trailer out behind the town barns all year, the engineer.
Yeah, Larry.
He said I should seal that bridge this summer, so. We're gonna have the fire company come down, wash it all off and then go get some concrete sealer and seal it.
Awesome.
Hey Rick, just a word of advice on Seneca Stone's fine binder. If you apply fine binder, you know that you gotta seal that just because it's a little more porous. So I would, if it was me and it was able to do so, I would stay away from that for a top. I realize it's a little bit cheaper, but you get more bang for your buck out of a type six or type seven if it's affordable, you know what I mean?
Well, they're gonna put a type seven binder down on the sub base.
Type three, you mean. Okay. And then what do they, talk of for a top?
Yeah, they're gonna shim it with type seven. I think that was the bigger stone? Or the type three?
Yep, type three is the bigger stone. That's a type three binder.
And they were gonna shim it with that and then go over the whole road with type three, about three, three and a half inches deep. And then he said we could either chip seal it before fall or the following year, or they could put a, the fine binder on it or a top on it. And that was like in the bid for the 200.
I definitely recommend putting a top on it because that's your, that's your sealer and your everything and you don't have to worry so much about, you know, your chip seal or whatever.
Right.
On top of that, realizing that you've got other roads that you're gonna be planning on, especially if you're doing a five-year plan.
And then if that worked, I was thinking maybe putting in the five-year plan, like trying to blacktop Butcher Hill, because that's a heavy used road. You know? You gotta find something that, everything's getting bigger and heavier anymore. It's not just on pond, cars and trucks and Amish wagons. Every time you go up and down a back road, it doesn't matter if it's dirt or or chip seal or what it is. You got tractors and tractor trailers and log trucks and ton wheel garbage trucks and.
Yeah. And also trying to make it last longer, you know, the 10-year mark is for the chips, especially if you're using your chips money, but it's always good to try to get a little bit longer out of it, because then that just allows you to put attention to other places.
Right. Right, I was gonna figure on trying to get that down there blacktop and try it and see if that works better than the other, you know?
That makes sense.
Other than that, that's all I got. And if anybody wants to meet with Susan and that engineer, they're gonna be down to the shop Monday, uh, the 18th Thursday. They got any questions, because they're gonna go out and look at the sites that, or it should be bidded out.
Luke, I know you were invited on that email. Would any of the other board members like to be invited to that meeting?
I'll go.
Who's that? Seth?
Trevor.
Trevor? Alright Trevor, I'll send you the, I'll forward you the email.
Okay. The other thing, just to mention to everybody that's listening, the five-year plan that Rick is putting together, it takes one real bad winter and that five-year plan could get shot, because there's other places. I particularly don't like the five-year plan. A three-year plan is more than sufficient because of damages that you are unforeseen that could happen. So, you know, Rick's gonna do his best to do a five-year plan, that's, that's fine, just.
I think the governor wanted that.
Governor wanted the five-year plan?
Well, I was the one that asked Rick for the five-year plan and I was just sort of piggybacking. When we started the water project and the town hall project, the comptroller's office would like us to have a five-year capital plan and a five-year financial plan. So I just asked Rick for a five-year roads plan, but, I mean, I would be perfectly happy with three years, as long as it was comprehensive enough to address all of our assets and all of our roads.
Great.
Any further questions or discussion from the highway report? Hearing none, I'll make the motion to accept the highway report. Is there a second? Trevor with the second. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Report accepted. Ms. Ross-Paud, do you have a town clerk report for us tonight?
Absolutely. Remitted from Justice Van Cleef the amount of $644, check number 336 for fine fees and monies collected. That money is from March. Effects due to the pause, New York State pause order. In addition to that, monies ins and outs for the month, Seneca County paid $14,743 of tax value money. Burial monies from Walter Bub accumulatively came to $432. And lastly, the only monies and fees that I have to remit for myself is $30 of certified copies for the deaths and births that have happened over the last month. I don't have a dog license report as that was affected by our pause order. Monday, is that the 16th, we intend on opening up the Lodi Town Hall co with the justice. I believe it was the judge himself put up personal protective equipment as in hand and wall and surface sanitization equipment. I believe we have cinnamon who's gonna continue to do cleaning as we open the building. We do ask when you enter the building to please wear your mask, keep social distancing in mind and try to be understanding as Monday comes and we catch up on things entering into phase two. That's really all I have right now.
Thanks Connie. And aside, real quick, could you do us a favor, the board a favor, and the preliminary engineering report that was in the meeting packet that I sent to everybody? Can you print out paper, can you print out paper copies of that, please, and distribute that to the board members' mailboxes?
Done, yep. Absolutely.
Thank you. Any questions for Connie and the town clerk report tonight? Very well. I'll make the motion to accept the town clerk report. Is there a second? I think that was Luke with the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carried, town clerk report accepted. Paul, would you like to give us a library report tonight?
Yes. The library report, I'm just going to summarize this, but the details are in the report that you should have somewhere in your collection of documents. But, Portside, roadside, Portside pickup service is starting on Tuesday, June 16th. And as far as how that's going to work, it's gonna be pretty simple, but you can go to you can go to H.O.L.D.S. at lodilibrary.net to get some details or to the website, And it's, so, because it's just a little process that people have to go through to make that work. Hours of operation for the Portside pickup are also in that written sheet. Which are several, enough hours that it should be easy for people to make it work for them. And then, and then there are these summer fun packs to go for the kids. A grant, a generous grant from STEPS, resident health promotion, weekly goodies for kids during the summer reading program, which is gonna run from June 26th through August 28th. Free takeaway bags of age-appropriate reading material and as well as healthy prepackaged non-perishable food items will be given away every week. And everybody's eligible for that. No restrictions based on level of need or residency. All are welcome.
Even you, booking a cookie.
And oh, that's a, there's a need for families to call ahead to establish a pickup time for that, which you can see again in this written sheet. And then upcoming events, tight tails, steam pumps and finer things, poetry club, still being produced, available. uh, still being produced, available, the library YouTube, on the library YouTube channel. Um, and that's about it.
Thank you, Paul.
Things are starting to be a little more, little more active now.
That's great. Do you anticipate that the library will be reopening alongside phase four?
Yes. But I don't have any details about that.
No, I, I've heard some, some tentative dates for phase four through the, um, through the grapevine, but, you know, I don't think it's appropriate for me to gossip. But all signs, all signs point to us opening, um, you know, close to the beginning of July, I would guess.
Carol, do you have any information on that?
No, it's, it's scheduled for phase four, but, um, details we don't have yet.
Right.
We just have to wait and see.
Right.
Well, thank you, Paul. Thank you for that library report. Before we move on, does anybody have any questions for Paul? Very well. Thanks again, Paul.
Good.
Now, we'll quickly run through committee reports to see if there are any topics that our chairpersons want to touch on. Uh, I'll start with Seth Thomas. Anything on the agriculture and environment front?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to mention a quick thing. I did, uh, a webinar, um, with the Seneca, Seneca Lake Watershed Inter Municipal Organization. Um, I guess it was back in May and it was on the right to farm laws. Um, was pretty informative for me. I grew up around here and I am a farmer, but didn't know a lot of the, uh, information that it covered. So it was pretty, um, interesting and I guess just the two things I wanted to share with the town, for people that, um, might be interested is that obviously the majority of the Finger Lakes is farmland, um, but it's also at a high risk of being developed. And once farmland is developed, it pretty much never is converted back to farmland. And the right to farm laws are kind of a tool to slow that conversion by preventing tax increases from driving farmers to sell their land. Um, it also protects farmers from being, um, kind of harassed or sued by people that don't understand, um, the things that farmers have to do as far as working at night and spraying and stuff like that. Um, and the one thing that was kind of, um, I guess interesting was that everyone thinks, you know, farm, it's a big field or vineyards or orchard or something, but, um, woodlands are actually, they count as, that they're called farm woodlands. So even though you would just think of it as a forest, um, that's covered under right to farm law. And then the other thing was, so a lot of people are concerned about, um, pollution in the lake, especially from runoff from farms. And, um, people often bring up the Amish because they question their farming practices. And, um, according to the, um, soil and water, um, conservation district folks, they say that they have a fair amount of Amish farmers that attend, um, their meetings when it, when they're, um, getting together to kind of discuss best management practices. So that's a positive thing. Um, I know a lot of people kind of like to, um, blame them. And I think that it totally depends on the community, but there are a, a lot of them that are aware of how they're connected to everyone else and are trying to make a, um, a difference to, um, to, to do better practices with their, their land management. And so the last thing is I wanted to tell everybody, think our last real or meeting we had at the actual town hall, um, I told everybody about the harmful algae blooms, possible connection with the mussels. That got canceled because of COVID nineteen, but there's going to be a webinar version of it, um, this coming Tuesday from seven to eight thirty P M. And the Cornell Cooperative Extension is going to be hosting it. The website where you can register for it is Seneca County C C E dot org. And it's right on their, um, right on the, the main page to, um, register if you want to just listen to the, to the speech that's gonna be going on. But it's about the connection, possible connection between the harmful algae blooms and the, and the mussels in Seneca Lake. And so that's, that's all.
That is great information. Thank you so much. I, I just posted a link, um, in the chat box on the right-hand side of most of our screens here. If you don't see that chat box across the bottom of the screen, there should be a button that says chat. Um, and you'll see the link that I just posted to what Seth was referring to. Paul, I'm sorry that I interrupted you there.
Well, I was just gonna ask for a repeat on, on the, uh, uh, the day, the day and time of that webinar, but maybe that's something that's on your.
Yeah, it's June sixteenth next Tuesday.
Thank you, Seth. That was great. Paul, anything on, uh, the economic development planning and tourism front or government operations and criminal justice?
Uh, no.
I can't think of anything either. Uh, Luke, how about anything from finance or federal affairs?
Right at this time, Paul.
All right. And Trevor, anything from public works and highway regarding the town of Lodi?
No. Frank, thank you for the shared services, for the work that we're doing on, uh, West Seneca Street. The help was grateful.
Yeah, and I'll say thank you too. I thought you guys did a great job if I didn't say that already. Um, the county is doing some work, uh, down West Seneca Street, replacing the storm sewer, I believe. Is that what you call it, Trevor?
Yes.
And so they tore up a few of our yards, including mine, um, which my wife was pretty surprised by. And a little bit of our driveway, but they're doing an excellent job, uh, restoring that. And I think you, you guys are doing great. So thank you.
At least you got the ruts fixed in your front yard so it don't look like Min Horns now.
Exactly. It's true. Rick's referring to, some of my neighbors moved out one day and they, they, um, basically drove a U-Haul down the first six or twelve inches down the front of my yard. Um, and, and, you know, there's some giant ruts there. And, and lucky for me, a month later, the, uh, county comes and tears it all up, so I don't have to pay for it. So much appreciated.
Nice, yeah.
I got lucky.
Was there any, was there any repair done to, uh, the drainage situation on the, the next street down on that corner, uh, you know, uh, Washington and Seneca Street?
Well, we put a, um, concrete catch basin in. So that way, if the village wants to tie in to help some of that drainage issue, then they can tie it right into the storm sewer.
Oh, nice.
And I think the village is gonna put a catch basin in up there in the low spot. And we're gonna hook into that other pipe. I ordered the tea and the stuff for that for the village. And Vin Horn wants us to dump a bunch of ditch dirt in their yard and build a berm so the water don't run off them out on the road no more.
That's great. Is that what you guys were up there doing today?
Oh, we were cleaning that sidewalk just there.
Oh, nice.
There's a sidewalk that goes from Linda's all the way up to the corner there. So we cleaned that all off to get an idea about where the pipe and stuff's gonna go up through there.
Great. As a village resident, I'll say thank you. You know, that, that part of Washington is, is really, really rough.
And then we put a little runner crush in that low spot, hoping maybe it takes the water down to the county's new catch basin until we get in there and get that done.
That's great. Nice work, guys.
Good work, good work.
All right, that's the end of our committee reports tonight. Uh, up next is, uh, the county board report and town supervisor remarks. Um, generally, when we have these meetings on Thursday, I have attended a county meeting on Tuesday a couple of days before. Uh, however, we did not have a meeting on Tuesday. We had a double meeting two and a half Tuesdays ago and did a consent agenda to pass all of our, our committee work. Uh, so we will meet again in another two weeks or so, but I do have a very short set of prepared remarks. Um, I think the big piece of news in Lodi this week was the drunk driver that damaged property at the Historical Society. Um, one of the monuments was damaged, but, um, not too badly. I thought it was a lot worse when I first heard the news. Uh, I spoke to Jim Covert and he pointed me in the way of a couple of point people, uh, primarily Noel Clausen and, and Mark Brown. And, uh, Jim thought that the driver's insurance should cover the, um, the, the damages necessary to get things back to normal. Um, I think it's one of the three monuments, um, that we have came off of its base. And then there was some, some, you know, shrub and, and brush, excuse me, not brush. Can't think of the word for the bush. Bush, it's a bush, um, out front. And so, uh, he thinks that the insurance is gonna cover everything and, and there's really not too much damage. Um, for those of you following the national news, I don't think, um, you know, I don't think the county will be addressing anything, uh, in terms of, uh, sheriff's department operations or police operations, though I know that might be a popular, uh, subject in these times. Uh, but I will keep you apprised if anything happens on that. Um, I also think that this will be our final online board meeting this year, or at least I'm hoping so. Um, phase three, four-hour region, the Finger Lakes region, begins tomorrow. And it's my belief that we'll see phase four underway, um, around the end of the month or the beginning of July. So, um, let's all plan on meeting at the town hall in person next month in July. I think our meeting date is July ninth. Um, I'm really, really happy to see the amount of folks that we've had showing up to these online meetings. So I'm hoping that we can keep that momentum going in person, uh, when we get back to it next month. So thank you very much, everybody, uh, and I'm happy to have a short report this month. Uh, before I move on, does anybody have any questions about my county board report? Great. Moving on to old business, uh, I have two items on the agenda tonight. Uh, the first item is a town hall update. I engaged with a, a designer from a firm in Elmira Heights, and he was very quick to give me the warning that his services would be fairly expensive. He was estimating that it would cost about thirty thousand dollars to create a preliminary, uh, well, actually not a preliminary design, but a, a design and, uh, building supervision for the project. Uh, I informed him that that was about the same price that we had just paid hunt engineers, uh, to build, uh, to give us plans for a one point nine million dollar project. And, um, I told him that we were aiming for about a half a million dollar project and the price was the same. So we were fairly dissatisfied with that. I reached out to Luke, who's had some experience in this realm, and I reached out to Susan Freikolm from Municipal Disaster Consultants, who's been helping us with FEMA money, uh, but her passion is sort of in these, uh, community projects. And, um, at this point, I think the smarter thing to do is to put, uh, a request for proposals or a request for qualifications out to the public for design services, um, for a new town hall. And the advice that Susan gave me was, you know, don't necessarily go after somebody who's going to do the full design and get you the stamped drawings and oversee the building project. You're sort of asking for a lot in that, you know, you can chop it up and, um, essentially hire, you know, an architect that has your back, that, that can create a preliminary design. It doesn't have to be the stamped drawings so that we know exactly what we want and then can put that out for requests for proposals once we have exactly what we have. You know, it's, I know it's a little frustrating for some of us because we've been working on this project for so long and we're sort of, uh, at a starting from scratch point. Um, but I just want to make sure that we're very diligent and we do it right and we don't, uh, skip any steps or, or commit the town to spending excess resources if we don't have to. So all of that being said, um, I have set up a new building committee meeting. Uh, we are, well, actually, I'll invite somebody, um, to the question here. My intention is to have a building committee meeting on June twenty-fourth at six P M. Uh, the members of the building committee are myself, board member Seth Thomas, town justice Louis Van Cleef, pantry leader Carol Titus, project manager Art Kalis. And then I still intend to name one more person to this committee that has a little bit of a handle on the town finances. Perhaps that'll be our bookkeeper, um, or another financial expert. Carol, you're the only one that I didn't hear back from regarding that meeting time and date. Are you available to join us for a building committee meeting on Wednesday, June twenty-fourth at six P M?
Um, yeah. I won't go to my other meeting.
I did work in a little bit of leeway that we could push it to the twenty-fifth if you need it. So, um, just let me know if you wanna, wanna back off of that.
Well, the twenty-fifth is better for me, but if everybody else is done, uh, planned for twenty-fourth, I, I'll just switch, switch my meeting.
Okay, let me talk to the crew and I'll get back to you. We'll get an email thread going for the building committee. Um, and we will figure it out. I want to say hi to Art Kalis, who's on this call. Art and I have chatted a couple of times on the phone and via email, uh, but I've never met him in person or seen his face, so I just want to say hi to Art. Um, he, I believe, was the project manager for the library project. Is that an accurate statement, Carol?
Yes.
All right. And I hear he's very diligent and, um, task-oriented. And he's already sent me a, a very long email with steps that we'll need to take, uh, to complete this project. So I'm really looking forward to getting started. Um, I know it's all business. We don't necessarily have, um, a motion or a proposal at this time. I was hoping to have an R F P or an R F Q ready for this meeting. But again, I don't want to push anything too fast because I don't want to make mistakes. Um, so over the next couple of weeks, uh, I'll work with a couple of town board members on putting out a good, um, R F P or an R F Q, and we'll send it out to some relevant parties. Any questions or discussion about that? Fair enough. The other piece of old business is an update for the water project. Um, this week, we received our preliminary engineering report from Hunt Engineers for the proposed water system for the town and the village. This is again, something we've been working on for more than a year, but now we have finally the updated report that we paid for, um, that sort of spells out uh, exactly what our water system will consist of. And then this is the document we will ultimately use to apply for the grants that will fund this project. Um, I've distributed the P E R, the preliminary engineering report, to the board. Uh, Connie, uh, as I asked, will distribute physical copies. If any members of the public are interested in a copy, uh, please email me and I can provide you a digital copy. And if you'd like a physical copy, let me know as well and we can make that happen for you. Uh, the next step in this project is within the next month, we should receive the finalized map plan and report. Uh, that's sort of the second half to the preliminary engineering report. The, the P E R is sort of the base document that spells out the demographics and why we want a water project or why we need a water project and all the details that correspond with that. The map planner report is the physical map that shows where the water project will run, where the connections are, where the treatment centers are. Um, sort of gives us the visual aid to go along with the narrative from the P E R. So at next month's meeting, I anticipate all of the town board members should have that M P R in hand. And then we will, um, we'll begin applying for grants shortly after. Uh, the only news on that front is, I believe, the grant application deadline has been pushed back from July to November. Um, so that delays our project, um, what, four months? Um, but on the, on the positive side, with the pandemic, um, the federal government is allocating resources for upgraded water systems through something called the E D A. I believe that's the Economic Development Agency, but I'm not positive on that. So, um, the engineering team reached out to me last week and said that they had some hope that we'd be able to pay for a little bit more of the project, um, with the E D A since it will, uh, apply to, um, to COVID-related upgrades or, you know, general sanitation in general. So that is the water project update. Does anybody have any questions? Don't make this too easy on me, guys. All right, is there any further old business from any of the board members? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to new business. Uh, the first piece of new business I had is I'd like to make a couple of planning board appointments. Just to recap, uh, last year, Lynn Rosspa's seat became, um, well, Lynn Rosspa was not reappointed to her seat. However, legally, uh, she was carried to her seat, however legally she was carried over as part of the planning board until somebody else was named. We have not yet named another person for that position. And then Mark Benjamin's seat became vacant at the end, on the last day of July, and I'd like to reappoint him to that position as Mark emailed the town a number of updated training documents from the past couple of months, and we did not receive any other qualified applicants. So I have attached a couple of resolutions to the meeting prep packet. Let me see here if I can share that with the public. Yeah, there it is. I'm going to do that in the chat area here, real quick. There it is. So I've shared the resolutions that we're about to, that I'll make a motion for here. So the first resolution, Lodi Town Board Appoints Planning Board Member to Vacant Seat. This resolution appoints Lynn Rosspa to the Lodi Town Planning Board for the term that expires May 31st, 2024. Again, this is a term that has technically been vacant for a year, though Lynn has been a carryover. With a motion and a second, we will enter discussion, so I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Trevor with the second. Is there any discussion about appointing Lynn Rosspa to the planning board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. I'd now like to make another motion, the Lodi Town Board reappoints planning board member. This resolution appoints Mark Benjamin to the Lodi Town Planning Board for the term to expire on May 31st, 2025. Both of these planning board seats are five-year terms and they do have some requirements for education along the way. I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Trevor with the second. Any discussion about appointing Mark Benjamin to the vacant seat on the planning board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you to Lynn and Mark for continuing to serve on the planning board. I know we haven't had much action from our planning board lately, but feel confident that your supervisor will be encouraging you to update the comprehensive plan as well as creating a bit of a vision for our town over the next five or 10 years alongside our capital plans and our financial plans. On, the other piece of new business that I had is those, the, the request for proposals for the design of new town hall project, though as I mentioned, I did not write those out because I wanted to, to take a little bit more time to do them right. So with that off of the agenda, do any of the town board members have any other new Hearing none, we'll move on. At this time, we'll open up the meeting for any public comments or questions to the board. Is there anybody here who would like to speak? I don't see any hands raised, I'm not hearing anything. Fair enough. Announcements, I will announce the next regular board meeting date is July 9th, 2020. Again, it's my anticipation that we will meet in person at the town hall at 7:00 PM. I will encourage the board members to show up a little bit early, just like we used to, to review the vouchers and the bills and sign off on them before the meeting starts. If anything changes in that regard, if we do not get the go-ahead from the governor, I will notify the board and the clerk of an online meeting, but I do fully expect that we will be able to meet in person on July 9th. The other announcement I have is for the Seneca Watershed Intermunicipal Organization. For the past few months here, I've been making announcements that we're going to hold a meeting here in Lodi for SUIO, but all of those meetings have been canceled since they were scheduled to be in person at the fire hall under the pandemic. However, again, June 30th, we intend on actually holding the meeting at the Lodi Fire Hall, and I think that's going to count whether or not the pandemic or phase four still exists. I think we will just simply practice social distancing inside the fire hall. So next board meeting is June 9th, or excuse me, July 9th at 7:00 PM. The SUIO meeting, I just want to double check the time here if anybody wants to show up. The SUIO meeting is on the 30th at 7:00 PM. Outside of that, I have no further announcements, and we will entertain a motion from a board member to adjourn this meeting. Is there a motion? Anybody want to make a motion to get out of here, or should we just keep hanging out?
Make a motion.
I heard Seth Thomas with the motion, I'll second it for goodness sake. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Bye team.
No.